I'd like to call the April 2, 2019, meeting of the Buncombe County Commission to Order. Thank you all for being with us this evening. Let's start our meeting with a pledge of allegiance. Please rise and join us in the pledge.
Pledge allegiance is that the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At our meeting this evening, the County Commission will formally declare April to be Child Abuse Prevention Month. This is a time for recognizing the great work of our law enforcement, healthcare, and nonprofit community, as well as many dedicated Buncombe County employees who work to protect the safety of kids in Buncombe County. Their jobs are not easy. In the past year, the county has conducted 3,297 investigations of abuse, neglect, or dependency in Buncombe County. Before we begin our meeting this evening, let's hold a moment of silent prayer and appreciation for all the people who work to keep our children safe in their homes and in our community in Buncombe County. Please join us in a moment of silence. Thank you. And thank you all for being with us for our County Commission meeting this evening. Before we get started, I'd like to announce that we have parking validation and bus passes available for folks who are attending County Commission workshops and meetings. So if you're attending this meeting and you would like to have validation for the county parking facility or transit, please see one of the officers who are here on your way out. And that validation is good for today only. Let me read the ethics reminder to the board. "In accordance with the Code of Ethics adopted by the Board, all County Commissioners have a duty to obey all applicable laws regarding official actions, to uphold the integrity of the office, to faithfully perform the duties of the office, and to conduct the affairs of the governing board in an open and public manner. Is there any item on the agenda the outcome of which will have a direct, substantial, and readily identifiable financial impact for any board member? Also, does any board member have a financial interest in any public contract coming before the Board today? There being none, all board members have a duty and obligation to vote on any matters that are voted on by the Board this evening." All right. We come to the consent agenda. In the approval of the remainder of the agenda, there is one change that we need to make, Commissioners, which is to, on the agenda, we have consideration of a legal settlement, but Ron Payne cannot be at the Commission meeting this evening. He had to go out of town on family matter, and so he wants to be here with us to discuss that item. So we'd like to move that to our next meeting. All right, so we'll take that off. The one other change I wanted to request is that we do have the Child Abuse Awareness Proclamation on the consent agenda, and we have a proclamation, and I thought it would be appropriate to read that. So why don't we pull that off the consent agenda and read that?
Yeah, that needs to be under good news anytime we hear. The proclamation should be under good news.
I, yeah, I think that's right. So if that's a consensus, we'll take that off consent, and we will handle that under good news. And I know I didn't ask anyone before the meeting. Is there anyone who would like to read the proclamation? We did have a ceremony this morning, which we'll say a few words about later as well, but is there anyone who would be interested in reading this for the Commission?
I can read.
Great, thank you, Commissioner. Is there a motion to approve the remainder of the consent agenda and the remainder of the agenda as published?
I'm so moved.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we come to good news.
Right.
And as Commissioner Belcher's coming up, we have our Stoney Blevins with us, who heads up our Health and Human Services Department, and some other folks that we'll acknowledge as well after the proclamation is read into the record.
I'd be glad to read the proclamation. We all have our pinwheels on, which is a symbol of innocence, and show hands who put pinwheels out the window when you were a kid in a car. Not a problem. We've been wanting to get rid of that clock for a long time. I hope you took it out when it came down.
You took it out, boy.
Deal. Okay. "County of Buncombe proclamation of Child Abuse Prevention Month. Whereas the problem of child abuse and neglect affects many of Buncombe County's children and has reached epidemic proportions in North Carolina, with 118,149 investigations of child abuse, neglect, or dependency last year across the state. Whereas last fiscal year, the Buncombe County Department of Health and Human Services conducted over 3,297 investigations of abuse, neglect, or dependency. And whereas preventing child abuse and neglect is the responsibility of all citizens. And whereas every child has a right to a safe, healthy, nurturing environment. And whereas community action is needed to help prevent child abuse so all children can have the opportunity to reach their potential. And whereas it is vital that we join forces with the Child Protection Team of Buncombe County and Mountain Child Advocacy Center, Inc., to reach out to parents and children to prevent child sexual abuse and neglect, and to strengthen families and children who have experienced abuse. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the Board of Commissioners for the County of Buncombe as follows, that the month of April 2019 be proclaimed Child Abuse Prevention Month in Buncombe County. That this Board does hereby call upon every citizen to join the child protection organizations, groups, and individuals in observance of the month with appropriate programs and activities. That this proclamation be effective upon its adoption, adopted this second day of April 2019, Board of Commissioners for County of Buncombe, signed by Brownie Newman, Chairman."
All right, thank you, Commissioner. And I would, we have got a lot of, as we mentioned before, there's a lot of great people in the community who work on this, but many of them are people who work for Buncombe County. So I'd like to ask all the folks who work with Buncombe County, with Health and Human Services, or other departments of the organization who work on these issues, to please rise so we can just thank you for your great work.
Stoney, if you'd get that proclamation, you can take that back to your office and to your team, please.
Thank you. All right. All right, we have several public hearings that we want to attend to this evening, and the first one is a public hearing on the Linamar Consolidated and Modified Economic Development Agreement, and Tim Love will present this item.
Good evening, Chairman and Commissioners. For this evening's public hearing with Linamar, first I'd like to introduce and thank Linamar for attending with us. We have two folks in the audience, Ken McDougall and Sam Coker. In addition, Clark Duncan, who you know from the Economic Development Coalition. In your packet, you have a number of documents. Those include a resolution, a draft economic development agreement, a memo from me to you explaining sort of the agreement itself, as well as a request for Board action. But as always, I'd like to use a presentation to help facilitate our discussion. We got it. So background and request, just by way of history, I know some of you know this, but wanted to reiterate today, as we bring Linamar here before you. This story starts in March 2010, and this is when the Skyland Volvo facility officially closed. When Skyland Volvo closed in Hendersonville Road, they took with them 230 jobs, and in addition to that, approximately $300,000 in annual property tax revenue. As you'll recall, this was during the quote-unquote "Great Recession," and so at our peak, we lost 10,000 jobs in the metro area. To combat that, on August 23, 2011, this Board approved unanimously an economic development agreement with Linamar Incorporated to take over the Skyland Volvo plant, create 400 jobs, and invest $125 million in the community. On November 18, 2014, this Board entered into a second economic development agreement to further induce the company to continue its growth. The combined agreements totaled $315 million in capital investment and a total of 800 jobs by the year 2021. For those that do not know, Linamar is an international company. They manufacture a variety of auto parts, focusing on heavy-duty trucks in some cases, but also fast-paced driving machines and others. Linamar has a number of international sites, but in North Carolina alone, they have three sites. They have our site here in Arden, a site across the line in Henderson County, as well as in Selma, North Carolina, and Wilson, North Carolina. Due to some economic constraints and challenges, namely the closing of the Caterpillar business in our region, Linamar's faced some challenges with meeting growth targets in the economic development agreements that they entered into with us. They've been forthright in that, and based on your direction, I've worked with Linamar to try and come up with a plan that would get them back on track so that they could deliver those same performance commitments, and also make sure that our incentive dollars were well spent. Today, we're asking for the Board of Commissioners to consider and approve a resolution that authorizes the county to move forward with a consolidated and modified economic development agreement. In terms of the details of that agreement, you have that in your packet, but I'm going to walk us through today just to make sure that you understand the details. In terms of our project overview and status, based on the two Linamar EDAs, I've already stated this, but I'll reiterate, Linamar is obligated to create 800 new jobs in our community. These are Buncombe County jobs. Also incentivized to create $315 million in capital investment, so this is buildings, this is equipment, it does not include the land. In addition, those 800 jobs had to meet a certain wage target. In our current agreements, that's $39,000 annually with at least 50% health insurance coverage. To translate that into an hourly wage, that's $18.75, which is significantly higher than the living wage in our community at this point. As I've already said, in 2017, Linamar was unable to document that it met these commitments. At that point in time, they should have had 152 jobs in place and $143 million in capital investment at their site. They were unable to document that through tax records and public filings with the state. So the county began deferring incentive payments, and last year, we discussed that in a meeting. So no payments since 2017 because of the inability to meet performance commitments. As of March 2019, Linamar's status is displayed on this slide. They have approximately 300 jobs at their facility here in Buncombe County. They've invested approximately $141 million, and the 300 jobs that they've created are at an average wage of $51,000 a year, which translates to $24.50 an hour. What I'd like to do before we get into the nitty-gritty with the actual agreement, so I'd like to ask Ken McDougall to join me here at the podium to sort of talk about the challenges Linamar's faced, but also the steps they've taken to sort of overcome those challenges and further talk about the future.
Thanks, Tim. Thank you all for having me here today. I just wanted to reiterate some of what Tim has already gone through. We did experience a bit of a setback, mostly due to the cancellation of the Caterpillar business. Since that time, we've undertook to focus more on our key automotive strengths in the area instead of the off-highway construction market, which was the foundation of what we invested in the county for. And we focused on really next-generation powertrain components and propulsion systems. As everybody's heard in the news, it's not just all about engines, it's electrification. So we're really looking to focus on programs for the future. A few of the programs we've been able to secure are gears for the eight- and nine-speed transmissions, which are used in various different products. We're also working on gears for a new hybrid transmission that is coming on the market now, as well as multiple components and sub-assemblies for a new high-performance transmission. We also, as we've seen in the marketplace right now, there's been a transition towards trucks and the truck market. We've got several programs working on larger mid-size pickup trucks, which we're pretty excited about, as well as a next-generation technology in engine block manufacturing, where we're actually doing spray boring. Instead of putting liners in your engine, we actually do a plasma coating inside the engine. That will be the first time that is done outside of one of the major OEMs, and I believe the first time in North America in production. So we're pretty excited about all of those things, as well as other pursuits we're working on for electrification and gearbox programs, which we believe will put us in good standing to meet the commitment that we've made. We remain committed to the county, to our investments, and to the job creation that we have. One slight, the way we look at the different, the commitments not just to the county but to the state, we actually have five plant locations now inside of North Carolina. We're pretty excited about it. We do like to cluster plants together. We see that growing even further as we're going to different phases of development. So again, just in summary, we remain committed to the site here. We've got great employees, great cooperation and work with the community, and we look excited, looking forward to the next few years. So thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. All right, thank you, Ken. And so the Board, when we brought you sort of the status of Linamar, you asked us to figure out a way to move forward. And so what we've done in conjunction with Linamar is we worked on a revised agreement. And so this revised agreement, it's called a consolidated and modified agreement. And what this did, it took our two economic development agreements and merged them into a single agreement. That agreement is in your packet, as I've said. Some of the highlights, for those that have not seen the agreement in the audience, it's a single agreement with one set of milestones, so we always know where Linamar is supposed to be in terms of tracking against jobs, tracking against capital investment. In addition, there's annual performance targets, so each year that there's an incentive payment, there's a specific job target, a specific capital investment target that we're tracking towards. This maintains all of the original commitments from the original agreements. So the same job creation targets that were established in 2011 and 2014 respectively are the same ones in this agreement, the same is true with capital investment. In addition, and I want to be very clear, no additional incentives are associated with this agreement. This is all original commitments just merged into a single agreement. One change, however, in this agreement is an increased average wage. As I said, initially, the average wage was projected to be $39,000 a year. Linamar has increased that average wage to be $43,600 a year, which matches the bottom rung of our economic development policy for incentivizable jobs, and equates to $20.60 per hour, not counting health insurance. Another detail was the extension of the timeline. As Ken said, Caterpillar had a severe impact on the product line, so we've extended the timeline by six years to give Linamar additional time to meet those commitments. And finally, in the agreement, it's plainly clear, incentives can and only will be dispersed if annual performance targets are hit. So there's no paying in advance, it's paying after deliverables have been completed. In terms of the performance schedule, this is in the economic development agreement, but wanted you to see it here as well. Starting in calendar year 2019, you can see an incentive of approximately $1 million, which would only be paid out if Linamar was able to meet $120 million in cumulative investment and 400 cumulative jobs. You can see in this table, I've also showed you the annual growth targets, so that way you get a sense of how quickly they're growing. Our previous agreement didn't have quite as much incremental growth built into it, so relied on some heavy assumptions that job growth targets would be hit sort of towards the end. We've remediated that in this agreement. As you can see, over the course of the next six years, the remaining incentives would be dispersed $1 million at a time, getting us to 800 jobs and $315 million in capital investment in the year 2024. As you can see, in the far-right column, the jobs annual, you can see there's kind of a smooth growth pattern here, so between 50 and 150 jobs per year, rather than assuming that overnight we're just going to hire 400 people in a labor market where we have 3.2% unemployment. No questions, I'll keep going.
I have one. It may be in the report. What are the property taxes paid annually on their, is that in the report somewhere?
It is, it is.
Okay, thanks.
And I've got some stats here on the next slide.
All right, thanks.
Related to property tax. So in terms of overall impact of Linamar and our community from an economic development standpoint, again, 800 jobs, $315 million in investment, historical property tax revenue of approximately $1.8 million since 2011, an estimated $13 million in labor income for the 300 employees, so those are the salaries of those 300 employees, approximately $600,000 in local taxes, so this is sales tax, school tax, fire tax, things of that nature, and an estimated future property tax revenue of between $400,000 and $500,000 annually over the course of the agreement. By the end of the agreement in 2024, a cumulative total of about $6 million in property tax. And of course, those amounts will continue to be collected post-agreement. One quick note here, the property taxes collected on an annual basis do fluctuate. They will be somewhat higher in peak years before depreciation impacts capital investments, but the safe average is between $400,000 and $500,000 a year. Additionally, in the table, the Economic Development Coalition has prepared for us an economic impact analysis to give you an idea of sort of the trickle effect of Linamar in our community. So the direct effect of Linamar, you can see through the 300 jobs and approximately $13 million in labor income, but you can also see an additional 182 jobs that are related to indirect, and then an induced 147 jobs. And so that can be difficult to quantify, these are estimates, but it's the idea that Linamar has suppliers in our community that they purchase things from, but it's also the idea that the employees of Linamar are going to spend in our community when they purchase, you know, household goods and things of that nature. Total estimated effect in our current status is 579 jobs, approximately $28 million. Did that answer your question, Commissioner Belcher?
Well, I think it does. So I mean, it's safe to say, and you know, what we're doing is rewriting an agreement that was established a long time ago, but that annually, we're getting about half of what is being paid out in tax, in property tax.
That is correct.
And then you can look at the other, because, I mean, some people live over the county, they live in other counties, they, you know, they spend their money other places, but so we're really, we're really only looking at recouping in these bottom numbers half of that number, right?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
All right, if no other questions, I have one last slide. This is new, I apologize. I added it after your board packets were printed, but for those in the audience, this is the economic impact of Linamar's total, 800 jobs, $315 million, should they hit all their targets. And so just wanted you to see that. In a previous slide, I showed you 300 jobs. This is with the 800 jobs. So again, you can see sort of the magnitude of this project in our community.
So that's a big difference. That's 1.3 million annually, and the payout's a million. So after that, it's, you know, putting in that amount of money.
That is correct.
Okay.
But I wanted you to see where we are today.
Yeah.
And where we're projected to be, so. Are there any questions?
All right, if there's no questions now, we do need to have a public hearing on this, so we'll do that, and then we'll come back and see if there's any other discussion or questions. All right. I will open the public hearing on consideration of this economic development agreement at 5:29. Are there any members of the public who wish to comment? Clark Duncan, please come on up. And if you are going to comment, you've got, and this is for this item and any others in the future, you've got three minutes. You get one light that lets you know you have 30 seconds left, and then when the other light comes on, your time's up. So please stop when your time's up. We want to give everyone the same amount of time to talk to the Commission and share your name and where you live.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, my name is Clark Duncan, and I'm proud to serve as your Executive Director for the Economic Development Coalition for Ashvam Buncombe County. Our enduring partnership of the county, the city, and the Chamber attest to the vital role of both public sector leadership and private sector leadership in achieving our shared goals in economic development, like a more diversified economy, like better careers for our residents, and of course, a growing and sustainable tax base. I simply want to add this evening my great appreciation to the work of staff and Commission, as well as the leadership of Linamar that are here tonight for the good faith effort to bring this agreement before you this evening. Both are responsible to the Buncombe County taxpayer, but also recognize the great value of an employer like Linamar and of a thriving advanced manufacturing sector in the Buncombe County economy. Tim mentioned this, but it's worth recalling, I was unfortunately on the job at the time. It was December of 2009 when we first learned that Volvo Construction Equipment would be leaving this community, exiting a 450,000-square-foot building on a 68-acre campus, furloughing some 225 full-time jobs. And it was certainly one of the more difficult days on the job for me and for many, many people in this community. But with the leadership of this Commission, our staff went to work with many partners in Buncombe County, and within less than 12 months, we were welcoming Linamar to their new home on Lake Julian. So I would add, you know, the company has created more jobs than we lost on that unfortunate day, and I'm really pleased to hear tonight they're affirming their plans to scale that high-potential facility to more than 800 jobs here in our community, and that's something that we're here to celebrate. So thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, anyone else on this item? Jerry Rice.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Members of Board. Jerry Rice from Canadetown. You know, projections and estimates are pretty good, you know, but the real numbers are what it's all about. My concern is Caterpillar left a hole there, but there's something else. This is sitting on the property near the Duke Energy, and now this is from my information for some employees that's been out there, that the railroad tracks was compromised in some way because of the issue of getting coal ash out, and some way or another had an impact on Linamar. Now that's what was told me. So I was just wondering about the infrastructure and the land and the buildings, whether or not they support what numbers they're talking about in what they're going to employ out there, and if those numbers are going to get to where, if I'm remembering correctly, there were some that's moved over into Hendersonville or a part of it at one point in time because of the infrastructure. Now, I could be totally off-base, but I'm just giving you some information that I was given by some folks, so I think it'd be worth looking into because of the numbers not coming to, the numbers that we've been, because it said "no fault of theirs," something about "no fault of theirs." Now, the Caterpillar, I understand, but I'd just like to know about the infrastructure, if they have what they need there to build the base that they're talking about. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Anybody else? All right, we will close the public hearing at 5:34 PM and bring it back to the Commission. Are there any questions? Or is there a motion?
I'd like to move that we approve the new consolidate agreement, a resolution with Linamar.
All right, and questions? So we have a resolution, and then we also have the updated agreement.
That's correct.
Do we approve both of those?
By approving the resolution, you are authorizing the, you're approving the agreement?
By approving the resolution, you are authorizing the, you're approving the agreement, but if you would like to vote on the agreement as well, you're welcome to do so.
With the, so, so I think the motion was to approve the agreement, but we're actually only going to approve one thing, we should approve the resolution which approves the agreement.
Didn't I move that we approved the resolution?
I thought you said the agreement, but I may have misheard you.
Yeah.
It's for the resolution. Okay.
That's what I said.
Alright.
Yeah.
Very good. Further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Alright, Tim, thanks.
Thank you.
Clark, gentlemen, thank you for being with us to give us an update. Appreciate it. Next up is consideration of a zoning text amendment related to manufactured homes, and Nate Pennington, the Planning Director, will present this item along with other folks from the Planning Department.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair, Commission Members, members of the public. I'm here tonight, Nathan Pennington, your Planning Director, as well as Josh Freeman, your Zoning Administrator, and we'd like to present the text amendment for the expansion of manufactured homes into three additional zoning districts, those being R1, R2, and Beaver Dam. About a year ago, April of 2018, we held a series of work sessions with the commissioners. One was on affordable housing, the other one was on infrastructure. Both of those sort of had a parallel track in that we discussed obstacles in the county. One of the common themes was affordable housing. Based upon direction of those work sessions, staff studied the possibility to expand the allowance of manufactured homes in three districts where they weren't currently permitted, and we're talking about individually owned lots in this instance. Countywide zoning was approved by ordinance in December of 2009. Prior to countywide zoning, zoned areas were limited to the Limestone and Beaver Dam townships, which had been in existence since December of 1981. In many respects, this expanded application of countywide zoning was an exercise of assigning districts that already existed in the Limestone and Beaver Dam districts, along with the addition of the Open Use, Airport Industry, and Conference Center Resort districts. In April of 2013 and September of 2014, North Carolina General Assembly abolished the extraterritorial jurisdictions of Asheville and Weaverville. And as part of this rationale, the justification for dissolution of the ETJ areas was that the Bunkham County in its entirety had to be zoned. The county then matched zoning districts of these areas as closely as possible to the zoning districts that existed for Asheville and Weaverville. Both Asheville and Weaverville did restrict the placement of manufactured home within these zoning districts. Of Bunkham County's 12 zoning districts, the following currently allow manufactured housing: residential low density, R3 residential, employment, and open use. These districts comprise approximately 86% of unincorporated Bunkham County. The majority of the land area in the county is zoned open use, approximately 75%, which is a district that tends to be more rural in character, contains the least amount of infrastructure and services, and is the least restricted from a land use perspective. It also contains the majority of manufactured housing in the county. Zoned areas other than open use ring the more urban areas and municipalities, they're more densely developed, and they contain the majority of commercial corridors and have more access to infrastructure. So it's important to stress that if adopted and enacted, these text amendments would not apply to manufactured home parks, nor expand the placement of manufactured home parks into additional zoning districts. The Planning Board approved this amendment by a vote of 6-2 on January the 28th. We've included in your packet a number of maps, exhibits, graphs, and calculations. Know the maps aren't perfect, and they can't account for every single externality that may take place. The federal government does regulate manufactured homes in the sense of the Housing and Urban Development Code, health, safety, and drainage. The state has the ability to regulate permanent foundations, ADA, accessibility, and access, and the local municipalities have the ability to regulate aesthetic standards. Josh Freeman will get into the individual standards that are proposed for the expansion into these three districts. We also have run off a few copies of that January meeting with the Planning Board, because some of you have asked for some of the comments that took place in that meeting, and we have those available for context. Happy to summarize that as well. And with that being said, that ends my presentation. I'm going to let Josh go through a few slides that go through the text amendment point by point. Thank you.
Good evening. Thank you. Okay, so I'm going to pick up where Nate left off and summarize some of the technical standards that are being proposed in these text amendments. Let me, alright, let me start off by just certifying for the benefit of the clerk and the board that these, this public hearing was properly advertised in accordance with general statutes and Bunkham County Code. We're specifically proposing tonight and considering in public hearing amendments that would allow manufactured housing on individual lots, not in manufactured home parks, those won't change, as Nate said, in R1, R2, and Beaver Dam zoning districts. And we are considering new standards that would apply to those homes placed in those districts. Nate covered the background, so I'm not going to get into that too much, other than to point out that from a existing county policy perspective, the 2013 update to the comprehensive plan and some of the other supporting documents that feed into that plan document offer five points that I think relate to this proposal. Goals, those goals being to expand housing choice options, create new potential for affordable housing, promote homeownership, while also supporting quality rental development, ensure equality, excuse me, ensure the availability of a diverse housing stock, and allow manufactured homes to be placed in a more flexible way while respecting neighborhood character. So those are policy goals in your currently adopted plan, and we believe that these amendments speak to those goals. As Nate mentioned, the Planning Board did recommend by a vote of 62 in favor of these proposed amendments. The Planning Board spent a lot of time on this, I want to give them credit for the hard work that they put in. They met a total of five times, spending several hours each, each time discussing these amendments, among their other more routine business. So I want to thank the Planning Board for their work. Alright, so getting into the neat, the meat and potatoes of these amendments, I want to just be clear for the record, the amendments that we're reviewing tonight have only, only have bearing on the zoning ordinance. There are no other changes to any other section of Bunkham County Code embedded in these changes that we're discussing tonight. In your zoning ordinance at the present time, this is the definition of a manufactured slash mobile home. We generally don't use the term mobile home anymore. This is in your current ordinance, it's current law. The important point here is that a manufactured home is a structure which is transported in one or more sections on a permanent chassis, different from a foundation, talking about the chassis, and that does not meet North Carolina Building Code. A new definition which we've included in the draft amendments specifically defines a HUD labeled manufactured home. I'm not going to read all this out loud. The important point here is that a HUD labeled manufactured home was constructed after June 15th, 1976, built to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development standards for manufactured housing, and they bear a red label that looks about like the label on your screen. You probably can't read it, but it says, "This is a manufactured home built to federal standards." That's installed on the unit by the manufacturer after having been inspected by HUD certified inspectors during the construction process, and the label certifies for any future buyer or regulator that the unit was built according to HUD standards. So for the purposes of this discussion, when we talk about manufactured homes, we're talking about HUD labels, HUD labeled units bearing the certification, built after 1976, compliant with federal standards for manufactured housing. Any other pre-1976 unit would not be, is not being really addressed by these amendments. Alright, in the zoning ordinance in Section 641, this is an excerpt of your allowable use table. This is the table in the zoning ordinance that tells a user what types of land uses are allowable and which zoning districts. This is the most important change that you're considering tonight, which is to allow manufactured homes with special requirements in the R1, R2, and Beaver Dam districts. So the blue underlined SR, SR means special requirements. Projects that are permissible by special requirements are approved by staff within the Planning Department. There's no board involvement, no Board of Adjustment, Planning Board or Commissioners. There are certain standards that attach to the specific use that are listed in the zoning ordinance. Those are the special requirements. So the most prominent change tonight would be to add SR to this table on Section 641. I'm not going to read all of this, but I will just summarize and say that the first section within the new language, these are the standards that apply to manufactured homes, these are the SRS. This explains under what circumstances the standards apply. In summary, if you have a vacant lot in an R1, R2, or Beaver Dam district, you buy it and you want to place a manufactured home on that property, you can do so, subject to the standards that I'll go through in a minute. If you have an existing manufactured home in one of those three districts, it's, was put there before these regulations go into effect yesterday, and you want to replace it with a new unit, the new unit that goes in replacement of the old unit has to meet these standards. Lastly, if you have an existing unit on an existing lot, you don't want to move it, but you want to renovate it, and you spend more than a certain dollar amount in renovating that structure, the structure has to be brought into compliance, in which most cases is going to mean skirting is installed, and you have to reset it on a permanent foundation. So those are the three circumstances in general in which these standards are going to apply. If you have an existing unit and you put on a new deck, otherwise the structure doesn't meet the requirements, you're not going to be required to bring it up to standard. It's when you cross over that 50% value threshold in a renovation circumstance. Okay, skirting. In, in the discussion with the Planning Board, we discussed quite a few options that would be compliant with the existing general statutes that address the concern of integrating manufactured housing into non, or into, into existing neighborhoods that may be a mixture of housing types or may not have any manufactured homes. And the, the two factors that kind of rose to the top in terms of being priority for aesthetic standards, the first one was skirting, this, and the second one was permanent foundation, and I should say the third was the size of the unit. So in terms of the skirting, skirting is, let me give you a photograph so you can kind of see what I'm talking about. You have four examples here. You have a manufactured home sitting on a foundation with stone skirting. And I say skirting, in this case, it may be that the foundation is what is stone. Another scenario would be, let's, let's use the, the unit on the upper left that is stone. It could be sitting on piers that are supporting the structure, and what you see around the outside bottom of the structure could be installed to enclose that space, but may not be structurally supporting the unit. Either way, the space beneath the unit has to be enclosed, and has to be made of either stone, brick, rusticated, or architectural block, or concrete. In the current draft of the language in front of you, it also includes wood. We've received some inquiries from Commissioners about the possibility of removing that. That can be done, and we can talk about how to do that in a few moments. But these are the four primary examples of what would be permissible under the draft language. What would not be permissible as either a foundation cover or as a skirting to enclose the under, understructure of the unit would be vinyl, foam, metal, potentially wood, or a scenario where there's just no skirting at all. So it has to, has to be one of these four and cannot be one of these five. Caveat to that is that there will be circumstances where in an R1, R2, or Beaver Dam district project, the unit might be in the floodplain. If it's in the floodplain, staff has reserved in these amendments the authority to approve other kinds of materials so that the unit can comply with the breakaway requirements for lateral motion of a manufactured home, floodwaters moving back and forth. You can't have it sitting in a situation where the waters can't push through that skirting material, unless it's sitting on a permanent foundation that's elevated. So we've, we've kept that out as an option in case, am I making sense? I'm seeing some confused looks.
Well, normally that, excuse me, normally that, that will probably be placed, if it's a new placement, in an elevated state because of the new requirements.
Right. And so, in a circum-
On new construction.
On new construction.
On new construction, it would be in an elevated state already.
That's true.
Which means it would have to have the, the brick and the, and the block and the, the other thing.
Except, there could be circumstances where one is designing a permanent foundation-
Yeah.
-that meets building code requirements for a permanent foundation, but it doesn't have a skirting wall around, around it, which seems counterintuitive, but there are approvable foundation types that don't actually have an enclosure. In that case, in order to comply with the federal requirements and the state requirements for floodplain management, we may have to allow a breakaway type of skirting system.
You have, you have to do that now, right?
You have to do that now.
Yeah, okay.
So what I'm trying to be clear on is that in a, in R1, R2, or Beaver Dam, the only circumstance in which you wouldn't have one of these material types would be if we have to allow something else to comply with federal and state requirements. Does that make sense? Okay, alright.
The, the slide here, just, just, because it hasn't been said yet, I'm assuming you're going to say it, this is for multi-section, two pieces in the bottom right.
Yeah.
You have a-
Yes, sir.
You have a single wide, that's not, that's not what this is about tonight.
Right. I've, it was just, I struggled to find the best examples that would work graphically, so. But to be clear, to Mr. Belcher's point, only double wides or larger would be permitted under these new standards in R1, R2, and Beaver Dam. So vacant lot, someone buys a unit in R1 and moves the, moves that unit in, that unit has to be something larger than what we would call a single wide manufactured home. The language I'm seeing more commonly these days is single, one sectional, two sectional, three sectional, has to be two sectional or larger, or commonly a double wide or larger. Getting close to the end here, last couple of standards that are being proposed, these units would have to be placed on a permanent foundation as defined by North Carolina Building Code, and I believe someone from Building Inspections is here to help us with that if we have any questions. Oh, Matt. Take you, Matt. Wheels, tongues, and vehicular signals have to be removed, and we're only proposing to permit multi-sectionals at this point in time. And I believe that's it in terms of the, the technical standards. Again, Matt's here, and I believe Keith is here from Tax Office. I, I will say there was one discussion this morning about the, whether, whether or not one would be considered real property or personal property, and how that relates to the foundation type, and whether that can be financed. We, we did do some quick research between the two meetings. The Federal Housing Administration and HUD both endorse private loans and will ensure those loans for manufactured homes on permanent foundations, and that there, there's a list of about seven requirements, the most critical one being that it has to be a permanent foundation, and it can be, it then qualifies for title insurance through HUD or FHA. And what a permanent foundation is, I'm going to defer to Building Inspections. Before I leave, do you guys have any questions for me? Nope? Okay.
Thank you.
Yep.
Alright, back to us. You guys finished? Okay.
One quick final note, as a closing comments from staff. So tonight, just wanted to remind you, if you vote to approve and you'd like to see the change with the deletion of the wood as an allowable skirting, make sure you make that as, as motion. Also, just to keep in mind, there's actually two separate motions. One would be the motion for the vote, the other one is a consistency statement. Ms. Hockaday will walk you through that. And if there's any other questions, we're sitting right here.
I just have a question for Matt Stone. It'd be easy, if you could come up, Matt, I'll put you on the spot for just a second. Just, just, just very quickly, from a, from a permanent foundation for a multi-section, that, that would, that would refer to either a strips, footers, or a full slab underneath the house? Is that, is that correct?
Actually, it is what's from the manufacturer. So a pure foundation is considered a permanent manufacturer, a permanent foundation according to the state. The only true permanent foundation from a code standpoint would be one installed like on a basement, so it has full bearing on it, and those are typically designed by an engineer. There was a memorandum put out by the Office of State Fire Marshal back in June of 15 because there was some confusion on that. because there was some confusion on that. But if it follows manufacturer's instructions, or it follows the Manufactured Housing Regulations Code, it is considered a permanent foundation. The only time skirting, curtain walls, or anything like that is required is when it is required by the manufacturer of the manufactured home.
Yeah, or if we're requiring it. So if we're requiring it, it's going to have to have a footing underneath if we do a poured outside wall.
Yes, maybe, to clarify your question, yes. Once you require by local zoning a masonry foundation, it will trigger the footing requirements, the height requirements, the ventilation requirements, and things like that as part of what we would require from the planning side of it.
And all that's already established, and has been established for a long time in Buncombe County, yeah.
Yes, the last edition of that was actually 2004, and that particular code is when they did the last changes on that. So, yeah.
Okay, thanks.
It is what we are enforcing now.
Thank you very much.
All right, thanks. All right, let's have a, go ahead and open the public hearing on this matter. I'll open the public hearing at 5:55. Are there any members of the public who wish to comment on the proposed tax changes? Yep. And you'll get, you can go second. The lady in the back will go first.
Yeah, if you want to comment, just raise your hand.
Okay. We'll get to everyone, okay? And again, everyone's, you've got three minutes, and you'll get one light that comes on when you've got 30 seconds left, and then when the red light comes on, your time's up.
Okay, thank you. My name is Dorothy Stausen, I live in Swananoa. What I'd like to address here is the, this little graph that talks about what percentage of the county is available for, where manufactured homes are allowed. I know that oftentimes the argument is why I put them in R1 and R2 and Beaver Dam, because you already have 86% of the county available for manufactured homes. But what this graph actually shows is how much of the county is in a combination of open use, RLD, and some of the other recommendations where manufactured homes are allowed. But I'd like to point out that in open use, there's a big area right here called the Asheville Watershed that does not allow manufactured homes. There's the arboretum, there's where the interstate, all the acreage of the interstate. And I think if you subtracted all that out, you would find out that there actually isn't 86% of the county available for manufactured homes. So that you can't use that number of 86% as a way to tell where you could actually put manufactured homes. Now, because this is about affordable housing, I also think you need to consider, when you're considering where these manufactured homes are going to be allowed, is whether or not they're close to the, through, close to the transportation corridors, close to the bus line, where there's at least electrical service, because there's a lot of areas out here in open use where there actually aren't even any roads, there's no electricity, and those, these areas don't make sense for affordable housing. But these areas here that are R1 and R2 and Beaver Dam make an excellent area for affordable housing, and so that's why it's important to allow the manufactured homes to be there. So I'd just like you to take that under consideration when you're considering this proposed tax amendment to the zoning regulations. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, you make, the gentleman behind you, and then you can go next, okay? He raised his hand first. You can go right after him, okay?
Hi, my name is Tom Christ, and we're the Western North Carolina Manufactured Housing Association. Ten years ago, we went through something real similar. There were some different things that we looked at at that time, zoning, but right now, it's still about affordable housing, and we really want to see this pass. We think that discriminating in R1, R2, and Beaver Dam for manufactured housing doesn't make a lot of sense for a lot of different reasons. It just cuts people out of being able to afford a home, and we don't think that should happen. If you have a builder who builds a house in R1 and R2, and they build one in open use, and there's a manufactured house next to that one, basically, they could be saying that they're being devalued as well. So there's lots of different reasons not to be banning these homes. One of the other things, too, property owners have the right to restrict these by deed, and there are a lot of people that are kind of frantic wanting these things to be restricted, and they already have the right to do it, and I don't think this board should continue to have these restrictions in R1, R2, and Beaver Dam. Again, we've worked really long and hard to push this forward, and we'd like the opportunity for you to vote on this, and hopefully it will pass. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. All right, yes, ma'am.
Thank you for this opportunity to speech and I appreciate you bringing this up. My name is Sandy Holt, and I live in East Asheville, in the county, on a dead-end street. My road is less than a half a mile. I counted on the way over here today, we've got 15 single wides on my road, and we have three double wides on my road. I'm here on behalf of my son, who is at work. He hasn't missed a day in 12 years. He's 33 years old, he's single, and he's still at home. His big dream is to have a home of his own, and he's been working for that. But because of the restrictions put on us by the county, we're evidently in a zoning place that they say, no, you can't have, you have to have a stick-built home, or a modular. He makes $12 an hour, he's 33, he's single, he cannot afford a home here in this county unless we can be rezoned in some area to have a small double wide. We were thinking single wide, but I understand now you all are talking about a two-level or a bi-level, so that may be a possibility. He can afford that. Let me see where I'm at. We went down to planning and zoning, and they just told us that we could not have a small double wide on our property. We've lived there 32 years, we have almost two acres of land. Like I said, we're on a private road, we're not a private road, but a side road, and there's mobile homes everywhere. We look in a mobile home park. We've got three mobile home parks in our, on our road, and yet, we've not been allowed to help him fulfill that dream, so I'm hoping you will pass this. And I'm hoping I'm in R1 or R2 so that it will affect us and that we can be able to help him get what he needs. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Don, and you may go after this gentleman.
It's always amazing, you just come up here and say it, wonderful thoughts come to your brain. First and foremost, I remember when we first talked about cell towers in these chambers many, many years ago. Beaver Dam and the limestone said there could be no cell towers, which was against the FCC rules and regulations for placement of cell towers. And no one here knew where cell towers could go until I found out by talking to the board and the senator in Michigan. But I came across a question when I first came in here. This lady was talking about can't place a house there. Well, I asked the question, is there such a thing as a single wide, on-frame modular? And if there is, your double wide restriction in this ordinance is further limiting affordable housing for a young man or young woman, or someone that decides to move back here to take care of their parents and wants a place to live and call their own? And I just made a call to Oakwood, and I saw you shaking your head. Yep, they do make single wide, on-frame modulars. They don't sell a lot of them because there's not enough profit margin in them. But you know something? That's where Buncombe County comes in if you really want to provide affordable housing. So my recommendation is you pass this as is right now, but you dig into the details of a single wide, on-frame modular, and require that it be on a permanent foundation or whatever. And I make that as a recommendation to your staff and to this board, because if I can find out that answer over there on the cell phone before this meeting started, I bet you with Joe's help, and they're supposed to have a consultant call this young lady. So you get that question again, you're not going to be able to avoid the answer. Double wide is still putting a restriction on it to make the housing cost more. Thank you very much.
All right, yes, ma'am.
My name's Anne Bollinger, live in Weaverville. And I'd like to say, on the Buncombe County government webpage from the Department of Planning and Development, it says this. "The purpose of the zoning ordinance is to ensure orderly, attractive, and economically sound development, and to protect existing property values within Buncombe County. In addition, the zoning ordinance strives to protect and preserve the area's scenic beauty, natural resources, parks, and open spaces." I would like you to think about that, that that is on the Buncombe County website, and it says that part of the purpose of this zoning ordinance is to protect existing property values. I would also like you to think about the amount of area that we're talking about is in R1 and R2 is only approximately 9% of the property in Buncombe County. So we're talking about 9% of R1 and R2. So if the purpose of the zoning ordinance is to ensure protection of existing property values, I don't see how the prices of these manufactured homes coming into R1s and R2s are going to help protect the property values of the existing homes that are already there. We live in a very middle-income R1 area. Our home values, that people have lived there for years, have appreciated to the point now where they're selling for between $275. Our most recent new home that was built in our area for $470,000. Seems to me like the, not sure that the appreciation value of manufactured homes keeps up with the appreciation values that are currently exist in R1s and R2s. I'd like to know if where else will home and property values be protected if these, if you vote to forever change this ordinance. Say that homeowners and property owners in R1s and R2 districts deserve to have the same consideration afforded to us as others who are seeking your attention. The current ordinance, again, which is only applicable to about 9% of the property in Buncombe County, is addressing that issue and does not need to be amended. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Rice.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I think, I think, you know, this comes down to looking at each other around the room and just saying to ourselves, you know, I might not have what you have, but I respect what you have. I live around $350,000 homes, I live around mobile homes, I live around a lot of things, and a lot of things might not be slightly to me, but there's one thing about it, people live there. And I tell you, I grew up in a house, and just like Don Yellen, we grew up, we had to go outside to the pot. We called them outhouses. We carried water from the spring. Think about our ancestors, think about you, Joe. You know, don't forget where you come from. And if you come from somewhere that you had a lot more, don't come wearing a big hot hat from Texas in here trying to tell everybody what to do. I think the ordinance needs to just be common sense and something that can afford anybody to live here. When you get so restrictive that you're moving your folks out that's lived here all their life, you've got some serious problems in the head, and that's that thing between your ears, it's called the brain. We need to be thinking about the people, good, common people, that has given you a place to set your tail up there and make you some money while you sit there. We need to think about who we are and where we come from. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Anyone else? Yes, sir.
Hello, my name's Chris Rominger, and I am an Asheville native. I've lived here my whole life. I grew up over in Haw Creek. My grandparents purchased our home there in 1960 when it was new construction, and now I reside in East Asheville as well, over in the Limestone District, residential low-density area. And one of the things that I've been tasked with over the past few months, or something that I've taken on, has been trying to find my mother a new housing situation. And essentially, the predicament I'm in is that my uncle and my mother both own the home that my grandparents purchased, new construction in Haw Creek in 1960. And my uncle lives in a trailer out in Weaverville that is going to need to be replaced soon. And so when we look at the home value of my mother's home in Haw Creek, when we split that equally between the two, the amount of money that my mom's left with doesn't leave her with a lot of options in the area. And so I've checked the MLS essentially every day, looking for property that she could afford to build on. And essentially, when you look at the residential low-density district, you're looking at utility access. So with this situation, we can't really afford to bank on hitting water for $8,000. You know, we know that when you dig a well, that might cost you $20,000, you might not hit water. So people in a situation like my mother's don't really have that as a luxury, they don't really have that type of contingency built into their budget. So really, the, primarily the property in R1, R2, R3, where you have access to utilities, can really make a huge difference in someone's build budget, and especially when someone's on a fixed income, that really goes a long way. And so on the flip side of that, I have a home in 28803 zip, and I certainly echo the concerns about home values, but in my experience buying and selling homes, I haven't seen an appraiser that strictly looks at the median home price for our area, and I haven't seen an appraiser that compares our home's value to manufactured homes or off-frame modulars that are even on the same street. So I think a lot of the concern from property owners around how's this going to impact their property values, I don't think there should be quite as much concern as there is about that, and I respect the work of the board to ensure that there are restrictions placed on skirting and, you know, affecting the visibility of those homes for everyone in the community. So I would just echo that, you know, I don't want my mom to have to go live in Old Fort when she's lived here her whole life and put her away from her granddaughter if it's not necessary. So I'd love to see something like this pass to help us out.
All right, thanks so much. All right, anyone else? All right, I will close the public hearing at 6:13. Appreciate everyone sharing your comments on the issue. We'll say Old Fort is a great little town, so you might not want to give up on it too soon. It is not a long drive, but we get your, we get your point. All right, Commissioner.
Chairman, I'd like to make a motion, and then we can discuss however.
Sure.
So I move to approve the text amendments with the recommended modification of skirting materials to exclude wood from the proposed language found in Attachment A, Section 78-678A5B.1.B of the zoning ordinance of Buncombe County.
Okay. Ms. Hockaday?
Prior to the motion that Mr. Belcher made, we'll have to have a motion on the plan consistency statement, which is in your packet-
That's first?
-that says the proposed amendments are consistent with the Buncombe County Comprehensive Land Use Plan 2013 update, that the proposed amendments would not be detrimental to owners' adjacent neighbors and surrounding community as it meets a number of goals as identified in the Buncombe County Comprehensive Land- in the Buckham County Comprehensive Land Use Plan update. Therefore, the text amendments would be reasonable and in the public interest. So we'll have to vote on that first and then come back to your.
So will I have, will I have to come back and read all those dots again? I will want to.
I don't think so. Lamar has.
So I'm going to make the, so you've got all that, right? So I'll make that motion as stated by Ms. Hockaday.
Adopt the plan consistency.
To adopt the plan consistency statement first. So that's a motion.
Okay, there's a second from Commissioner Frye. All right. I'm sorry, did I miss you, Mr. Presley? It was Frye on that one, right? Okay. Okay.
I can't get it fast enough.
Give it to Jasmine. Give it to Jasmine.
Further discussion on the motion?
So yeah, I'd like to say a couple of things. One, I do appreciate the comments about the single sections and modulars, and the modular single section. I think you'll find that, you know, modulars are allowed. They don't, I don't think they distinguish between the singles and multi-sections. So some people even talked about tiny homes before this. And a lot of tiny homes are, or they're modular construction. So you've got all kinds of different construction. But I, I mean, I couldn't say it any better than has been said tonight. This is, this is about equity and about opportunity for families. I mean, you heard people talk about sons and uncles and mothers and, you know, property and 32 years and been here forever and, you know. And actually, if you go in these areas that's affected right now, where there's a lot of percentages that go around, and those I'm sure are accurate. I'm not going to challenge any of that. But if you go to these areas now and look, there are manufactured multi-section homes there already. What we're doing is just saying that, you know, the expansion within those areas is okay as long as they have the aesthetic requirements that are permanent in nature and fit in with that neighborhood. And this commission removed part of that text amendment because there was concern about, about that and about the permanency of, most of these are ranch houses, and they fit within a lot of smaller communities. And they, they, they will work very well in Buckham County. And as an advocate for, you know, affordable housing for 40 years, I'm excited about, you know, the possibility of this passing this evening. And I'll gladly support it.
Further discussion? Any questions? All in favor of the.
I do have a question.
Okay, sure.
Just based on some other conversation and things that I've heard. Do we have an idea of the demand for manufactured housing in R1 and R2? And do we truly know how it will impact property value and placement in these neighborhoods?
The only thing we can say about demand is just if we based it on the number of calls and walk-ins we get to the, to the department. I would probably ask Keith Miller to answer any questions as they relate to property value assessments of the property themselves. So that's the way I would probably structure that question or answer to it.
Thank you.
So as he's coming, I'm just going to make a comment on, on demand. I think, you know, there was, there's price ranges mentioned in Buckham County often of 200 and 400. And, but this is about families that can't even comprehend those numbers. They can't comprehend 200. They can comprehend 100. But they can't comprehend 200. And those families now have to seek outside Buckham County. So I'd say the demand in those lower price ranges are, is very high. But I'd say if you asked a realtor how fast a house that's 200 or less comes off their listing, I'd say it's very, very quick.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. To answer your question, I don't think there is an answer, unfortunately. But I worked with the planning department and spoke to the planning board about your question. And even tasked some of our staff with appraisal analysts to dig into the issue to see. But there's not enough data. In appraisal world, you have to have data, and you got to do direct analysis to figure out what happens when these homes will be placed in a neighborhood in which you think they may be affected. But the data truly doesn't exist. So I can't answer your question with anything definite answer because of that. There's not enough analysis or data to analyze to give you a clear answer.
But you would say that a home is typically appraised based on two, two big things. One is the square footage of that home, and the second is the property that home is located on.
Yes, I mean, that's, those are a couple of characteristics that we consider.
So whether that's a stick build or a manufactured home, those two, you'd figure the square footage on this one and square footage on this one the same, and the property would be the same, right?
The land value would be the same.
Yep, and the square footage would be the same.
Our schedule of values will make a difference in the dollar per square foot for the homes based on the market data that we had when the schedule values was written.
Right.
But to hear that comment, Mr. Belcher, I will tell you that recent analysis working up to the next reappraisal shows that there has been appreciation in manufactured housing.
I think there was even, for the first time, there was appreciation in, in single-section manufactured home this past year, I think, maybe.
Our analysis shows that there is appreciation in single-wide manufactured housing.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Miller.
All right, any further discussion on the motion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
We got a second round today?
Okay, so you want me, I can read it again if I have to? Okay, so it's, it's basically to make the amendment, as I stated before, but we're moving, we're moving wood out of that text amendment. It's a motion.
Yeah.
All right, so there's a motion from Commissioner Belcher to approve with the provision that wood cannot be a material in that specific technical standard, seconded by Commissioner Presley. Further discussion on the motion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you. Thank you, gentlemen. Okay. Next up, we have a rezoning request, Lee's Creek rezoning request, and Josh Freeman will present this item.
Thank you very much. Oh, it's up. Thank you. All right, so this would be.
Hey, Josh, before you do that, if there's people that spoke with this, unless they just want to stay, they can stay. But, you know, they just, they need to know if they choose to leave, they can go ahead and, and leave.
I can't imagine why anyone would, but you are allowed to leave.
Some of them, it's their first time. I just thought I'd tell them. It's a lot of fun, man.
We are not allowed to leave.
So apparently everyone else who's here wants to hear me speak, so we'll go from there. Okay, so this would be the zoning public hearing 2019-3, the Lee's Creek zoning map amendment. Start off by saying that this was also advertised in accordance with the general statutes and county code. Just a quick summary of the application. The applicant is, the property owner is Liberty Corner Enterprises. Addresses are 65 and 67 Lee's Creek Road. The applicant is Mr. Matt Segal of Ampersand Ellipsis LLC. The request is to rezone the property, shown on your map, which is located near the intersection of Lee's Creek and Irwin Hills Drive, or Irwin Hills Road, pardon, from R1 Residential to Public Service, PS. This is an excerpt of your zoning map. The current zoning is shown on the left-hand graphic. The yellow, the property outlined in blue is, is the subject property proposed for rezoning. It's largely zoned R1 at the present time. You can see that odd sort of, you know, half-square, half-oval-shaped, yellow polygon. That's the R1 zoning, and then the rest in pink is the existing public services zoning. The request is illustrated on the right, which would bring that public services zoning boundary up to the northern side of the subject property. The, in terms of, go back a second. In terms of surrounding land uses, you can see on the aerial photo to the left, to the north of the subject property, it's mostly single-family residential neighborhoods, R1 zoning in its, in its purest form. To the south, east, and west are mostly institutional uses, schools, emergency management facilities, things like that. So the property in question would be rezoned to PS and would bring those institutional uses into its boundaries as potential uses. Comparison of the two districts, in summary, I'll just say that R1 is our, our most kind of traditional single-family residential zoning district. 30,000 square foot minimum lot sizes when you're, when you're not accessing public water and sewer. Whereas PS allows that same, that same range of residential land uses, and it's very similar to R1 in terms of its residential allowances. However, it does allow a broad range of institutional-type uses. Does not include a broad range of what you would think of as commercial retail-type uses. So it's residential, some multifamily, and institutional-type uses. So schools, churches, daycares, things like that. Comparison of the districts in terms of the, some of the dimensional details, and I'm not going to go through this whole slide. The minimum lot sizes on water and sewer are very similar. R1 is 8,000 square feet, public services 6,000. If you're on Well and Septic, they're both 30,000 square foot minimum lot size. Setbacks vary a little bit. Public services is actually more strict. It has a 20-foot front yard, 10 on side, and 20-foot rear setback. Whereas R2, if you're on, I mean, R1, if you're on water and sewer, is actually less restrictive. Maximum building height is probably the biggest difference, 35-foot allowable height in R1, 50-foot allowable height in public services. Commercial break there.
Forgot to make the cell phone announcement at the beginning of the meeting, so.
This slide just gives you another perspective. It's, you're looking from west to east, and it just gives you another view of some of the surrounding land uses, a little better graphic. And to close out, this proposal is, in staff's opinion, consistent with the comprehensive plan. Specifically, it's in the water and sewer service area. It's not on steep slopes, not on a high elevation, not on a flood plain. It is close to major transportation corridors, and there is a reasonable separation between low and low-density residential uses and the proposed rezoning. The planning board's recommendation on March 4th was unanimously in favor of the proposed rezoning. That is also staff's recommendation, and I'd be happy to take any questions.
Don't see any initial questions. Let's open the public hearing on this at 6:27. Are there any members of the public who wish to comment on the, during this hearing? Okay, sure.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Matt Segal. I'm an 18-year resident of Asheville. I am the petitioner. So as you can see, one concern is that, that adjacent residential neighborhood, there will be no access through that neighborhood for this property. If it's rezoned, it will all be off Lee's Creek. And just some, some perspective on the use of this building. It has been used for the past 10 years as a group home for mentally disabled and blind residents. And the other part is that our bank, when we went to finance this, they could not actually find an appraiser that would do a residential appraisal because the obvious use of this building is commercial. And so I appreciate your consideration and hope you will approve the rezoning.
All right, thanks, Matt. All right, anyone else? All right. Close the public hearing at 6:29. Is there a motion?
I move to approve the plan consistency statement.
Second.
All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Is there another motion to approve the rezoning?
So moved.
Second.
Do we need a second?
I got a second. Y'all need to tape this thing down right here. I did that one of my first years as commissioner, and it lists that whole thing. And you know, you can just read it. See, the chairman and I can read that, y'all don't.
I don't have that.
Yeah, you need to do that. I will get that for you. It's awesome.
Oh, I'm sure you will.
It's awesome.
Appreciate it.
All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Thanks. All right, and we've got one more. The Hernandez rezoning request. Hey, Josh.
Okay, thank you. This public hearing is zoning public hearing 2019-4, the Hernandez rezoning. This also was advertised properly in accordance with North Carolina general statutes and Buckham County code.
So I have a question. Josh, before you get into all this, I have a question.
Yes.
With what we just did a little while ago.
Yes.
Will that affect this? It will not affect it at all? Okay.
I'm sorry, let me back up. The, the proposed, the manufactured housing text amendments that we just discussed.
Yes, because I think this is a request to place a manufactured home. Is that correct?
The current zoning is CS, which is not affected by the previous amendments.
Okay, got you.
So this rezoning would still, in order to achieve the property owner's goal, this rezoning is still necessary.
Yeah, it would have helped if I had read all of it.
Sorry, it took me a second to understand your question.
No problem.
Okay, so the address for the subject properties are 7 and 9 Arbor Street. Property owner is Guillermo Hernandez. Applicant is Laura Smith, Mountain Movers LLC. And I should actually point out that applicant title has changed. Kyle Dixon with Titan, Titan Factory Direct is here as the applicant. If you have any questions, he is available. All right, proposed rezoning would be from Commercial Services to R3. This is a map showing the rezoning in question. So on the left, you see the current zoning. The properties highlighted in blue are the subject properties. On the right, you see the proposed rezoning, which would pull the R3 zoning into that area. Commercial Services, it is a, is exactly what it sounds like. It is a mixed-use commercial zoning district. Residential uses are allowed. Manufacturing, manufactured housing, just for the record, is not. And that does tie into the property owner's goal. R3 residential in its current form does allow manufactured housing, as well as many other types of housing. And it is sort of our medium-to-high-density residential zoning district. Comparison of the, of the dimensional requirements, setbacks are almost identical. Building heights are actually going to be reduced from 50 feet to 35 feet. Minimum lot sizes are essentially the same. So the primary difference in this case is going to be the range of allowable land uses. We're going from very much commercial potential to almost no commercial potential, replacing that with broad residential potential. This is another image of the property. So you're looking west to east. And you can see in terms of the surrounding land uses around it, everything to the south of the property is pretty much entirely single-family residential of various types, with a strong, strongly in favor of manufactured housing in that area in terms of current land uses. Another view, looking from the south of, north to south. All right, comprehensive plan consistency. Staff finds, and the planning board also finds, that this is consistent with the comprehensive plan. It is within the water and sewer service area. It's not on a steep slope, high elevation, or in a flood plain. It is within reasonable proximity of major transportation corridors. And it is not near low-density residential uses by virtue of the fact that it's R3. It's a higher-density area, although that one's not as relevant. Planning board recommendations, March 4th, unanimous recommendation in favor to approve the rezoning as submitted, which is also staff's recommendation, and I'll take any questions.
There's two lots. Is this, is this just for one home?
It's, it, it's two lots within the proposed rezoning.
Yes.
One of those lots is vacant right now.
So are the, it didn't really matter, I don't guess, but a lot's been combined for one home? Or is there more than one home, or?
Mind, I'll have to let the applicant speak to that. Can you stand up and speak? I'm sorry. You'll need to come up to the podium if you don't mind, sir.
So my name is Kyle Dixon. I'm with Titan Factory.
I'm with Titan Factory Direct, representing the applicant. It's a, it's a single, it's a double, we call it double-wide, it's a multi-section home.
So, that'll be.
So, just one.
Okay, thank you.
Sure. Thanks.
All right, let's kind of open the public hearing on this at 6:34. Are there any members of the public who wish to comment during this hearing? All right, I'll close the public hearing at 6:35.
Some will make a motion and find that the request is consistent with county comprehensive land use plan reasonable in the public interest.
Second. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Is there a motion to approve the rezoning?
I so move.
Second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. All right, Josh, Nathan, thanks for your help on all these public hearings tonight. And Ms. Pender, is there anything to report this evening? Great. All right, we come to old business, and we have under this review of the East Haven loan agreement, and Rachel Nygaard is going to present this item.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Waiting for slides to come up. We're here this evening to discuss the East Haven loan agreement, and this is a project that was brought for, brought in front of the Board of Commissioners initially in January and approved at your February 5th meeting. A loan to support the development of this affordable housing project in partnership with Mountain Housing Opportunities. My name is Rachel Nygaard, and I'm Strategic Partnerships Director. In front of you, on behalf of a cross-section of departmental staff from legal, finance, budget, performance management, planning, tax, has been an effort that has involved staff across many disciplines to move forward the steps that have occurred between February 5th and today to prepare the loan agreement for your consideration, as well as, would like to thank Scott Dedbin, Executive Director of Mountain Housing Opportunities, and Cindy Weeks, who's Vice President and Director of Community Investment. We've collaborated with Mountain Housing Opportunities between these meetings in preparation of these documents that we bring for you today. In your packet is a community development loan agreement, and when we get to the end of this brief presentation, the recommended action for you tonight is to authorize the county manager to execute that agreement, as well as the associated promissory note and deed of trust. So, this project will create ninety-five units of affordable housing, as a recap, is located in the Swanonoa Black Mountain area, and is targeted to serve people at sixty percent or less of AMI, or the area median income. The total project cost is sixteen point eight million dollars, with construction slated to begin this summer. Here is what was approved by this body back in February, a loan of two point two million dollars, zero percent over a twenty-year term. As you remember, there was discussion and agreement from the organization to provide annual repayments, which you can see listed there, a certain amount in years one through ten, eleven through fifteen, and in sixteen through twenty, totaling a repayment over that timeframe, the life of the loan, of about one hundred and sixty-two thousand dollars, in addition to the lump sum or balloon repayment at the end of that twenty-year cycle. They agreed to extend the period of affordability for the project, and also made a commitment to pay property taxes on the, on the property. Our staff have worked together with their staff to estimate the value of that. Over that twenty-year period, the property taxes are estimated to average about twenty-eight thousand dollars per year, so for a total over that timeframe of roughly just a little bit more than five hundred and fifty thousand dollars. The one thing that was not decided by this body that was important to the structure of that loan was the dispersment schedule, so this is how that, how that two-point million, two point two million dollars is paid from Buncombe County loaned to Mountain Housing Opportunities. Again, staff collaborated on both sides and came up with a schedule that would be agreeable, brought that up for consideration by the Affordable Housing Committee, which is a subcommittee of this board, a new subcommittee that met for the first time on March 19th. And this does come to the full board as a recommendation from that subcommittee, the dispersment schedule specifically. So, that dispersment schedule, which is on your screen, shows these funds paid out over a three-year period, beginning July 1 of this year, so FY 2020, as well as payments to occur in FY 21 and FY 22. These are incorporated into the loan agreement, which has been posted on your site for the last week for public inspection, as well as many other standard provisions that go into these documents. Do want to point out that those dispersment schedules are tied to milestones, and we've included language in the agreement for planning inspections and planning permits and inspections to coordinate with the construction team to evaluate the completion of those milestones before funds are released. So, this brings to the recommended action this evening, which is to authorize the county manager to execute the community development loan agreement and enter into and execute the associated promissory note and deed of trust for East Haven Development. Thank you. Any questions?
I don't see any at this time.
Can I make a motion, Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I'll make a motion to authorize the county manager to execute the community development loan agreement and enter into and execute the associated promissory note and deed of trust for the East Haven Development. Do I need to indicate, say anything about the, per the dispersment schedule or not?
It's in the loan agreement itself, isn't it?
Okay.
So, I think it's.
Yeah, it's in the agreement.
Okay.
Second motion.
All right, we have a motion and a second. I have one question. Unless something changes, you know, will the county need to, is this the last time we'll need to review the documents associated with this transaction?
This is the last time that East Haven will be on the agenda for the foreseeable future. We're not bringing to you a budget action because these funds are incorporated into FY 20, so when these funds are budgeted, it will be rolled into the overall budget consideration.
By entering into this loan agreement, we are obligating the county to fulfill the terms of this agreement.
Correct.
So, we are, we're not appropriating the funds now, but we are legally committing to do that.
Right, and there are options to appropriate if the board wants to look at appropriating, like was done with Lee Walker Heights, a multi, we appropriated it all at once, but are spending it over a multi-year period. From what I understand, at this point, based on budget requests, we're looking at incorporating the year-one amount in our FY 20 budget plan.
Thank you. I just wanted to be clear on that, because sometimes it just seems like we approve things, and then it's like, and I know sometimes things come up, but then it's like, it's back, and we talk about the whole thing again, so I just wanted to see if, like, this is, this is it. All right, great, fantastic. All right, we have a motion and a second. Are there any members of the public who wish to comment on the motion? All right, all in favor of the motion, please say.
Chairman, I got a couple of comments I want to say. Okay, so, I voted against this last time because of the concern of the agreement, and I still want us to look at, look at that, you know, going forward. I don't, you know, I want to make sure that, that it's a, I think it's a great project, and I think it's in a, in a perfect spot. But I want to continue that conversation that we had about looking at different alternatives and how to, how to do this, and how to do it better, because, you know, when we get down to the end of this, there's going to be a payment, there's going to be a balloon payment, and we want to make sure that the county is protected, the taxpayers are protected in that. I think the dispersment schedule on the contract's fine. I mean, because we may want to do some of these differently in the future and have more time to look at it, so, you know, being on the committee, you know, I challenge our committee to do that, and I just want to put a, you know, placeholder with the, with the county manager on looking at that as we go, as we go forward, too.
All right, all in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
All right, five to two. All right, thank you, Rachel. Okay, next up is a resolution authorizing execution of an easement agreement with the Metropolitan Sewerage District of Buncombe County, and Mike Frue will present this item.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, thank you. This is really a housecleaning item for MSD. I mean, they have owned, operated, and maintained a sewer system, lines and pump stations next to the Ferry Road property since about nineteen ninety, and within the last year, they've done an as-built survey of the location of those sewer lines and pump station, and found that in some areas, it's actually located outside an easement that was signed about thirty, thirty-five years ago. So, in order to assist MSD with their regulatory compliance, they're just asking that we modify it to make sure it's where it is currently located. It, we've run this by our prospective buyers of the Ferry Road property, and they're fine with it. The existing locations are basically along the southwest boundary of that property, near Brevard Road, so we would recommend approval of this resolution, which authorizes execution of the easement.
Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Any members of the public who wish to comment? All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Next, we have the grant-funded position policy, and Kurt Euler will present this item.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, thank you. I am here on behalf of a number of staff. We are currently in the process of hiring a number of positions to fill that are being funded, fully funded by a MacArthur Foundation grant. There are a total of six positions, one has already been filled. And what we found out is that our personnel ordinance is less than clear as to how to treat these grant-funded employees. So, in an effort to, number one, recruit qualified employees, and number two, to retain those employees for the duration of the grant, we've brought forward this policy that basically fully states out the employment relationship between the county and the grant-funded employee. What, what the policy basically states is that, number one, these grant-funded employees are employees that will, they will not get covered status as a regular employee, but what this policy does do is grant them a number of benefits, such as annual leave and sick leave, group health insurance, 401K, state retirement, and other benefits that are, that are normally awarded to regular employees. So, we ask the commission tonight to pass this policy, and that's all I have. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Kurt, I'd like to ask the question I forgot to ask earlier. How long will these jobs last, do we know?
It's my understanding, and somebody in the audience can correct me if I'm wrong, but I think the grant is for two years, so these positions will last for two years, and once those positions are over, the position goes away unless the commissioner's vote to create a full-time permanent position, and that would have to be brought back before you.
So, so that would, that would automatically happen? It just, it wouldn't bypass us? We'd have to approve that.
They would, it would have to be in the budget. You'd have to basically create the position for a permanent position, because this is a grant-funded position, you'd have to create, and you'd have to vote on it.
So, I know it would be put in the budget, but would we be, you know, reminded that the, you know, these are the grant, you know, because just saying it's in the budget, I understand that, but, you know, there's a lot of things that, you know, can be in the budget that we may or may not be able to see.
It would be.
But I got a nod over here, so.
Yeah, no, it would be, it would be brought to your attention.
Thank you.
Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Any members of the public who wish to comment on the motion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thanks, Kurt. We have appointments to the Early Childhood Education and Development Committee. And who's presenting this item?
I'm gonna, yeah, just briefly, I'd like to say a thank you, I think on behalf of the three commissioners serving on the Early Childhood Education Development Committee, Commissioners Presley, Whitesides, and myself, to all twenty-nine community members who applied for this committee. It was an incredible, incredible group of folks, and we went through a process and would like to bring to the board twelve names to nominate for formal approval, so I'd like to put forth a motion that we officially appoint the following folks, Kit Kramer, Philip Belcher, Misty Rising Cogbill, Susan Mim, Siobhan Letman, Kristy Cheek, Edward Johnston, Glenda Weinert, Himanshu Karvier, Jane Hatley, Kadada Nguyen, and Leslie Anderson, to the Early Childhood Education and Development Committee.
I second.
All right, any discussion? We do not normally take public comment on board appointments, so, all in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? All right, thank you very much. Okay, let's take a look at the county commission boards with commission members on it. There's still a couple of vacancies. We've, I'm sorry, whoops.
Excuse me, Mr. Chair.
Yep, thank you. The planning board.
Yeah. Normally, we enter, norm, there's three appointments, but there's five people. Normally, we interview those, but we certainly give strong consideration to those that were, have been on there before, so I don't know.
Okay, so, these, there's three, three of these members are serving and wish to be reappointed. Is that correct?
So, how many openings do we have? Just the three?
Well, I move that we reappoint. Okay, who are the, the reappointments?
Sloan, Walker, and Rittenberg, is that right?
Correct.
The first three.
Yeah.
So, I'll move reappointment.
Okay, okay. Al moved, Mr. Presley seconded to reappoint the currently serving members.
Sure.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you. All right, we still have the Crime Stoppers and Land of Sky Open. And the one others, we have the AB Tech Joint Advisory Committee, which will have two appointments from the county on it. I would like to nominate Al Whitesides and Jasmine Beach Ferrara.
So.
And we could just, well, any other comments on this? Well, let's see if there's any other suggestions on this.
I'm kind, I tell you what I'm thinking. I'm thinking that we should, this is the last thing on the agenda, we've not talked about it really at all. I would like to see us talk about it at our next pre-session, and, you know, just find out who's interested and, and talk to, I don't, I mean, I don't have any problem with two people that you pick. I don't have any problem with anybody serving on, on the board, but I don't know if anyone else is interested or has raised their hand or not. I'm not raising my hand, I'm just putting that out there, so.
Okay, Mr. Fryer's interested. All right, Mr. Fryer's interested?
We're changing, yes, we have three yourself out, but we're changing.
So, we'll have two, and AB Tech will have two.
AB Tech, that's it, and then there'll be one person picked from somewhere else out of the four.
Those four will pick one other representative.
And just for clarification, that's not in the current draft of the local bill in Raleigh to codify the MOU, so that would, there'd be some leeway between this board and the trustees as to how it's made up.
Oh, really?
Can we back off home for a while, then we're.
there remains some leeway between the trustees and this board as to how you want to form it and create it.
Well, but the MOU that we've voted on, and which they voted on, describes two members each in that group appointing one other. So whether there's a state bill or not, we do have an MOU, you know, an approved MOU between us that spells this out.
Yes, sir. And I was just speaking, really, my discussions with the bill drafter, he just said they want to leave those kind of things within the discretion of local bodies and not interfere.
Okay.
Because I, I mean, you know, that, that part of it may be, you know, live in document and need to be changed, but has AB Tech picked their two yet? Do you know? Have they put anybody out?
I don't know. You know, I just assumed, go ahead and get this taken care of tonight. We can talk about it now, so...
So I want to make a motion for Commissioner Fryer and Commissioner Whiteside, and if we do it tonight, but I'd rather, I'm going to make a, I'm going to make a motion of Commissioner Fryer and Commissioner Whiteside, but I would prefer to have a lengthier discussion when we're not, we're out. And at the, and I, I would suggest we do it at, at the pre-meeting because those tend to be pretty comfortable, good discussions. People can tell why they want to be on it, and then we can make a good clear decision at that time. That'd be my preference.
So, so when we've had board appointments before where there's Commissioners, we typically don't just do motions unless it's one person and there's, you know, it's consensus.
Yeah.
Since there's three members who have been suggested, my suggestion would be we just go down the board. Each person gets two, two people to vote for and lets everyone identify which two you prefer. And the two Commissioners who get the most indications will, would be appointed.
But don't take a rocket scientist figure out that he's going to be appointed.
Well, no, but hold it. Let me ask you a question before we go in further. You know, the Board of Trustees will still have the final say, right?
Well, we will still have the final say in terms of appropriating money.
Oh, the money for the buildings. Okay. Okay.
This is like the Housing Committee. We, you know, you make recommendations, but you don't...
Oh, like the school, I'm sorry.
That's, that's right. But I mean, I mean...
But you don't have to do what the, I mean, you know...
This is a purely advisory board. But, you know, hopefully, like the School Board, you know, they'll dig in to it, think about the different competing needs a lot, and come up with great, great recommendations for, for us with, with a, with a lot of input from the full Board of Trustees. I'm sure whoever they put forward, they'll, you know, they'll give them a lot of support from the full Board. Okay, so let's start down on this side. I'd ask each Commissioner to identify which two members you'd like to appoint.
Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Do we have to do that? Do we get down the line and see if we'd like to sit it off a week or till the next meeting first?
I'm, I'm okay with that. If you would like to defer consideration, please raise your, please, till the next, well, we can actually make decisions there. We can actually only make...
That's what I'm thinking. I'm thinking we have that conversation that we're trying to have now.
If you'd, if you'd like to defer it to the next pre-session, please raise your hand. If you'd like to go ahead and vote on it tonight, please raise your hand.
Let's just get it over with.
Okay. All right. I think, I think the majority wants to proceed. All right, Commissioner Edwards.
Whitesides Beach Ferrara.
Okay.
Did I, I'll do the same.
Whitesides Ferrara. Whitesides Beach Ferrara.
Whitesides Beach Ferrara.
Ferrara or Whitesides? Ferrara or Whitesides?
Okay. Whitesides and Beach Ferrara receive the most, so they'll be our representatives to this joint commission. We still have Crime Stoppers and Land of Sky, which will remain open until we, until someone volunteers to serve on those. All right. We now come to public comment. Are there any members of the public who would like to comment on any motions that the Board has not previously discussed under our agenda this evening? If you are, then please come on up.
Sorry.
And you have three minutes, and just let us know your name and where you live, and we'd love to hear from you. So, yes, ma'am, in the back.
And this comment is going to sound suspiciously like it belonged with the discussion about manufactured homes in R1 and R2. But what I want to say today is that I frequently hear comments by, at the Planning Board and here in the County Commissioners about doing things that protects the quality of people's communities and also protects their property value. And I don't have anything against that. But what seems to be happening is those things are being applied to people who live in fairly, who live in fairly nice communities. They have stick-built houses. They have two or three cars. They have ample amount of resources. But then there's other people who need protection from not their property value going down, but their property value going up. If your property value goes up, then your taxes go up. And a lot of older people like myself, whose houses have been there and families have been there for almost a hundred years, are getting to the places where we want to hold on to our land. We don't want the developers to have it. We don't want to change the character of the neighborhood by allowing some person from Florida or Texas or wherever they come from to build a big fancy house in our neighborhood. Then it's almost impossible for us to maintain our ownership because if somebody builds a big house like that, like, because I live in Lidle Cove, the cliffs at High Carolina is right up in my backyard, then as soon as they started building those, or buying that land, and before that, people building big vacation homes up the hill, our property tax jumps sky high. And if you're going to protect the character of neighborhoods over here and the property value of these people from going up, then I think that the rest of us should be entitled to some protection of our, the character of our property, our neighborhood being changed by high-end houses coming in or housing developments coming in where a farmer had to sell his land, and it was a big farming community, and now all of a sudden, there's all these condominiums in the middle of it. We need protection for that too. So, I mean, it almost seems like, although I know you'll probably never do this, is that over here, you've got a zone for no trailers, and over here, you need a zone for no Richmond houses. So that we're protected, so that we're protected from losing...
Is it appropriate for me to say I just love you to death?
For we're protected from losing our property because we can't afford our taxes. We can't afford to be farmers because we can't afford the taxes. Thank you.
Thank you. Very much.
I don't remember that. Brownie, believe it or not, I wasn't going to say anything, but after her talk, I have to say this, because I mentioned it today to your tax department. You want to do what she's talking about doing? I can tell you how to do it. If you take somebody that's got eight, nine, ten acres out in the country, and they got one house on it, and they don't want to build any houses, their kids are married, gone off, and they want to leave that eight or nine acres vacant, not developed, you need to get you legislators, and if this whole board with seven of you sitting up there with the makeup you've got right now, went to your legislators and demanded that this county have the right to let that five or six or seven acres be declared preserved, and you create a category that makes it stay that way, and it can't be sold for development, and you put the taxes at a locked-in base, and you got to remember when that person dies, what's going to happen to that property. The kids are probably going to want to sell it and divide it and whatever, but then you'll get your money then. But it, it will also help, because you got a problem in this county. Go out Jupiter Road. I can remember when I'm the eighth house on Jupiter Road in One Mile. I bet you now, I'm the thousandth house. And yes, you, you see what's going on out there, don't you, right down below you on the right-hand side of the road? So we are going to build in so many places that we're not going to have any other place to build. And then you're going to lose your character that brought the people here. So I want you to think about that. You can figure out a way to do exactly what she said without having to tell somebody what to do with their property. You let the property on her side. And I guarantee you, how many of you would have looked out across the road and seen a green field than a hundred and fifty houses? One of which sold last year for three hundred and fifty thousand, and this year sold for four hundred and ninety-five thousand. Thank you very much.
All right. Thanks. Mr. Rogers.
Chairman Newman, Commissioners, I'm Reverend Scott Rogers. I actually live in the Inca section of Buncombe County, and I'm here with the Asheville-Buncombe Community Christian Ministry. Thanks for this time. I haven't had the opportunity to meet our new County Manager, Ms. Pender, so welcome to this great county and community. And to Jim, thank you for your many years of service. It's been an honor to partner and work with you. I'm here tonight to share with you about a crisis that ABCCM addressed that you may not be aware of. Because tonight is a perfect example of a, what we call a code purple night, where temperatures are below freezing with the weather and the conditions, and our vans are out, bringing in the homeless as well as taking vital food and blankets to those homeless encampments so no one freezes to death. We found ourselves in an unusual position a few months ago at the beginning of winter when both the Rescue Mission and the Salvation Army no longer expanded and took over their regular capacity for our homeless during code purple. And ABCCM, Steadfast House, and Veterans Restoration Quarters have been carrying that load. I'm here tonight to report to you that since that time in October, we've had seventy-nine code purple nights. We have provided 6,220 overnight stays to 445 different individuals at a cost of a little over seventy-five thousand dollars that, thanks to our churches, has been reimbursed to some degree over and above what they give, which is about fifteen thousand dollars. ABCCM knows that we need to work with our Homeless Initiative Advisory Committee to come up with a better solution. But when we found ourselves faced with this crisis of individual lives, our churches and our volunteers simply responded. And it's taken us a while to kind of gather ourselves up and realize what the full impact is. I have a document that we'll share with you, and I'd like to leave it with you tonight. We'd like to ask you to consider a one-time gift to help make up this deficit that was thrust upon us. But more than that, we also appreciate your leadership and your support as we look towards a long-term solution. Because it'll be hard if we don't make accommodations to handle this in the future. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. Sure. Sure, you can share it with Mr. Turner. Jerry Rice.
Thank you again, Chairman, Members of the Board. I do not like to go up here and talk, and then go back and sit down, and I get stares and glares. You ever, you ever feel that way? Well, when I'm talking about Lenamar, I was talking about the infrastructure, the land, the buildings, and whether or not it would support what they were going to do.
We have already taken public comment on this matter tonight.
I understand, but you didn't do nothing. You didn't take my comment.
Yes, we did.
Nobody said a word about my comment. Okay?
We, I'm not going to allow comment on this again. I want to follow our rules. So please respect that. You've already had a chance to comment on that specific item.
I think in public comment, you can say anything you want to. It's not about what you're telling me I can say.
That is not correct.
That is absolutely correct.
We are not required to have public comment on every matter or take public comment multiple times on the same matter.
Public comment is comment.
You are welcome to comment on anything you would like if it has not been, had a previous comment on it earlier in the meeting. And that is our rule, and we will enforce it.
Okay. Enforce it. Now, TV-13, if you're going to enforce a rule, TV-13 stood right over at two meetings in a row, and they're not supposed to be over there. I've called your attention to it as the Chairman and as Board members. I don't know at times. And they still come over and set up, and you will not enforce that. So why do you want to try to enforce something on me? If you're going to enforce something, do it across the board. Don't pick and choose, Mr. Newman.
I'll be happy to look into that.
Look into it. That's the fourth time I've asked you. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? All right. We have two quick announcements. On April 16th at noon, the County Commissioners will hold their pre-meeting at 200 College Street on the first floor, a conference room of our downtown administrative building. And that same day at 5:00 PM, the County Commissioners will hold their regular meeting on the third floor, Room 326. There's not a need for a closed session this evening, I believe? There's not? All right. Thank you for being here. We're adjourned.